Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Has every everyone had a chance? Minutes? To identify it. Each two give me four. And with the board to inform them of the deadline for grant funding and calendar days. He said that with more information, he could possibly apply for a grant. Next year. I was under the impression that the board. Approved him chasing the grant this year.
That's what it was also.
Their. Motion to accept. I take a motion to accept. Since of May twentieth. Or said. Edit. Accept. Motion in a second.
With that, with that change, although the time has expired by now. So. Going to have to be for next year. It wasn't the deadline ten days. So so we we better leave it as Eperzu for next year.
Set that aside and the motion to accept. Then it says published.
I'm going to second it.
In second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is approval of. On table. And payroll. Have all had a chance to review the payables and if so, do you have any questions?
I did.
Please.
So so I'd like a little information on. How public health got forty four hundred passed due on their telephone bill?
In changing the. The telephone line from where it was to where it is now. There was some confusion in how they were going to send us the bill. So it was going to an email. In my office instead of coming is as a. Paper or bill. And we were notified. About all the bills together and submitted it for payment.
Thank you.
Any other items commissioners were prepared to address? The total vouchers in the amount of five hundred fifty seven thousand three hundred eight dollars and seventy six cents. Along with payroll liabilities in the amount of six hundred ninety six thousand. Six hundred forty three dollars sixteen cents for a total of one million two hundred fifty three thousand nine hundred fifty one dollars ninety two cents. Is there anything that you want to debate or can they have a motion?
That make a motion to approve the vouchers and payroll liability in amount of one million two hundred fifty three thousand nine hundred fifty one dollars and ninety two cents.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Pope. Odin Bridge update and activities. Is done my activity?
I I guess I have one question. Mr. Thompson called again on the fencing on South Piney. And wanted to make sure you knew where the boundary stopped. He thought you were. Over the boundary onto Pam's side putting an H brace in. Okay, thank you.
The town's got an M U plate through. Get the total number for. Then I looked at keeping that S curve on the South Piney Bridge. Boss Colbert ends up we can shorten it up about thirty feet. It designs finalized, put it out to bid. Like I say, that's probably. A project won't start till November. Got a little time. I still need to get in touch with Loomins. Telephone ability that's attached.
Got one question for him. Town of Marbleton is doing a lot of chip sealing this year and maybe some next year. They indicated they didn't realize they could maybe piggyback with the county in any way. Maybe in future years, can you reach out to the town of Marbleton?
We're working on a couple of sheds there outside the clubhouse. Did those get completed? Shane was working on one and another gentleman. Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Billy. Appreciate it. Andrea Jean.
Okay, so the first thing that I want to talk about is currently we allow employees to accrue vacation on a fiscal year. And so it's from July first through June thirtieth. And. We were hoping that we could change that to a calendar year so that they have fall. Billy's expressed that his employees. Have an easier time taking off in the fall to the end of the year than May, June, when they're all trying to use all of their vacation up. That's his busiest time. And I've talked to all the other departments and it either doesn't affect them, so they don't care either way, or they would be really grateful for this change.
Your tracking system is set up to accommodate that off of it?
Yeah, I can change it.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I don't.
Motion to change the vacation accrual period. Do we need a motion on that?
Probably.
Okay, I think so. Motion to approve vacation. Approval from a. Governmental fiscal year to a calendar fiscal year.
Chairman will make that motion.
I have a motion from Commissioner White.
I'll second it.
I have a second from Commissioner Bradley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And then the second thing, I don't know if you guys had a chance to read the email with the background on it, but. We have three policies that we. Administer that we don't offer to employees currently. And one of them only has one employee, another has a few employees that are slowly coming off. But there is one that does that has quite a few employees and their employees that are going to be on there for a long time. And we currently have a new rep that is local. And her name is Elizabeth Woodfin. She came to me and asked if we could start. Offering it to employees again. It's New York life and I said no because. It's just extra work and it doesn't work with our benefits portal and it's extra work for my office and for the clerk's office. And then she came to me and said. That if we did offer it to new employees, they could be on a bank draft system so that would come directly out of theirs, not through payroll. And then I asked if we could move our current employees to that also and they agreed. And so really this would be. Taking all of the work out of my office, out of the clerk's office, putting it on Elizabeth who welcomes it. And but still offering that service to our employees. So without us having to pay anything or do any of the work for it. So. Again, it's not a new service. It's something we already have for some employees, but. She is here if you have any questions about it, but. I just wanted to.
Questions? I have not.
I don't.
Mr. Vickney. And we're fine.
All right. Thank you.
Andre Irey. Maintenance update.
Morning. So just briefly, like the lights are done at the ice rink. We got all the new wiring and the new lights over the ice. Quite a bit safer now with that. Wiring being replaced. The Simco service is complete over there as well for the season. They just got a little cleanup that they're going to have to do in there. Matter of fact, I'm going to go check on that when I'm done here. Got a had a roof leak here in this building over over their offices. We've got that repaired. That's taken care of. The fire hall has had a intermittent leak over their weight room. I I did get the quote for it and it I've given it to the fire department. They're going to let me know when they want to get it done if they want to do it. Sooner once the budgets are. They see what the budget is. It's one of those leaks where the wind has to blow just right. But we've found it and going to get it taken care of. I did meet with the judges and the court staff and the engineer for that building. That we talked about on the big lawn. The weaning went really well, actually, and I'm waiting for him to give his estimate on what he thinks it would be to build it. Sounds like it might be cheaper than what I expected, but we'll see when that when that comes in and what it would cost. And then that's all I put on that list, but I had some other things that I had jotted down on here. There's a battery backup in the. Phone room that is pretty ancient and I'm. Trying to get a quote on replacing it. It's difficult. That Eaton company is really their service is really good for repairs and stuff, but their sales department is. Is. Pretty bad. So but I'm currently working on that Marbleton Sheriff's Office. We've been painting the trim on the building. And around the doors and windows. It was looking pretty bad. It should be close to being getting done. I'm going to go check that out today as well to see what he got done this weekend. The safe house fence, we've finally completed painting the fence. We started last year, but we kind of ran out of time. Got most of it done, but now it's it's finished. Rendezvous point rooftop unit has a. The motor up there is burned up and we're currently trying to get that repaired. We we ordered a new motor, but the wrong one showed up. So. Once we get the new one, will I get that finished up as well? That is all I got.
Great. Thank you, Andre.
Anything else?
Any questions?
I don't.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too. Visitor Center Peter Pollan. Thank you for that. Jim Mitchell. Did you have something that you wanted to add? We talked about that earlier, but I didn't see you here. Yes, please. We talked about that and thought since you weren't here, that had not been accomplished.
So just a quick update. The application has been sent. Excuse me, chairman and commissioners. The. Application's been sent. It's been gone through by state and tomorrow it will get forwarded to. FEMA Region Eight. And then we'll move into the benefit cost analysis and need a they have a matrix that we plug all our stuff into and if we get a score of one or below, then. That will move forward with the application. So more to follow. Hopefully, by the next commissioner meeting, I should have some more. More information, but that's all I've got right now.
And so we've met all all the timeline.
Yeah, timeline. It was said it was the application was completed. Last. After last week's or the last commissioner meeting and that's been sent to state and they've reviewed it and and are pushing it forward.
Great. Good job. Thank you for the update.
Thank you. A big help from Craig Harmon and Eric was here. I didn't give it a chance to take it, but Eric helped a bunch.
They got tired of waiting for you.
Yep. Thanks.
Thanks. Let's take a. We're about forty minutes ahead of schedule right now, so let's take a ten minute fifteen minute. Let's take a fifteen minute break. Until Peter Pollan comes with the visitor center. And then we will probably have another break shortly after that. For the next item.
Here he comes. He made it. Guess we're still on great.